Ready, Nick? Good evening. Welcome to the March 2nd, 2016 Board of Education meeting. The Board has been in executive session since 6:00 PM to discuss a personnel, individual personnel issue and contractual matters. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any PIG students with us this evening? Okay, good, we have quite a crowd tonight. Your requirement is that you stay till at least nine o'clock if the meeting is still going on at that time. We'll take a break, you'll need to come up and there'll be sign out sheets for you and if you have any forms that need to be signed by Board members, we're here to do that. If we're done before eight, come up and do that process at that time. Introductions.
Diane Stever.
Christine Beck.
Joanne Cunningham.
Dave Burst.
Jody Monroe.
Matt Downey.
Charmaine Wijssinger.
Lynn Lenhart.
Michael Cooper.
And Judy Kiewel.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the approval minutes of the February 24th regular Board meeting.
So move.
Second.
That's the first and the second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions that item carries? Do we have a representative from the Student Senate this evening? Okay, great.
Hi, I'm Elena Kryenberg, I'm a co-president of Senate. Like, the focal point of our efforts right now is on Really for Life, I mentioned that a couple weeks ago, I think it's on May 21st. What that includes for us is bi-weekly meetings with representatives from the American Cancer Society. We've divided the Senate into three committees, one is for public relations, one is activity planning, and one is fundraising. Right now, we only have the fundraising packets out to senators, we're kind of waiting for the website that can sign people up for the event and also get donations from people online, we're waiting for that to go up, it should be up by the end of the week, so keep an eye out for that, we'll probably have a formal announcement out to the community by the end of the week as well. We are just working on kind of getting things together, making sure that we have all our ducks in a row so that when we get the announcement out, we'll be able to go forward with planning from there, but that's pretty much where all of our efforts are going now.
Great. Are you gonna be looking for participants within the community or just the school?
Yes, definitely. Students, faculty, and every, we're looking to reach out to different community organizations for their support, which will hopefully get just Bethlehem residents involved too.
Great. Anyone have any questions?
I have a question, I saw you sneak in last meeting, but you didn't get a chance to get up and speak. How did Snowball go, what was the turnout and?
It was good, our treasurer net actually has all the numbers from that, but we, we made a lot of money on that, which is good, that'll go towards the funding of a lot of clubs, but we got way more participation than we've had in the past years, which is really nice.
Great, alright, thank you.
Anyone else, any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, the interim superintendent's report, Jody?
Thank you, Mr. Downey. Just a couple things, I did want to clarify some things regarding lab school. I provided an update a few weeks ago and there was recently an article in the Spotlight that unfortunately had a lot of inaccuracies in the article, so I just want to clarify a few of those things, and one of them was in regards to why the lab school committee was formed. In fact, the lab school committee was formed to review the program due to budget constraints faced over many years, really no different than what we've done with all of our programs, given the state funding. In addition, there had been no review of the lab school program since it began. The article also stated that the lab school has lost faculty, while this is true, has lost faculty from many years ago, so has every department. This past year, the lab school actually increased FTE by .8 and they now have more faculty in the lab school than they had in recent years. I felt the article in general was negative and the committee members were surprised by this since we feel the committee's work and the changes to the program have been well received by students, parents, and faculty, so currently, the committee is working on a response to the Spotlight to clarify the errors in the article and that will be submitted as a letter to the editor. Next, last week, we talked, we had some discussion about the bid for the pool and there were some questions raised about that, so Mr. Keys, our Athletic Director, and Greg Knowlty are here this evening to answer any questions, respond to some of those questions that you may have had, so I don't know if you want to wait till that portion of the bidding is up or you wanted to let them answer any questions now.
Doesn't matter to me, I wasn't here, so I'm not sure what transpired and-
If that's the only reason they're here, perhaps they can speak now so that we don't have to hold them necessarily.
So, Mr. Knowlty and Mr. Keys, you want to follow up on the discussion from last week?
Did you pass around my email or no?
I did.
Okay, alright, so just in general, at the beginning of this week, Mr. Keys and I met again with the varsity girls and boys swimming coaches to talk about the starting blocks. Everyone feels and anticipates that what's called track blocks, or these foot chocks, or the back angled portion of the starting block where swimmers push off, is going to be a requirement potentially in the next five years or so. These foot chocks are not required now and they're not actually in any schools right now. Presently, the size of our existing starting blocks are 24 wide by 20 deep, okay? 24 wide is a standard, 20 inches deep, 32 inches deep is probably more of a standard at this point. The depth of our existing starting blocks of 20 inches will not allow us down the road to attach these foot chocks, okay? So, in turn, Len and I don't feel that we should spend the money now to refurbish our existing starting blocks, okay, because in five years, if these are required, we'd have to buy new starting blocks, okay? So, and I just also want you to note that the alternate that was GC2 for new starting blocks was a 24 by 20 starting, okay, so we didn't have that conversation as far as longer starting blocks. You know, we're trying, we're kind of forecasting the future here with these, with these foot chocks down the road. So, we, we've started looking into costs of the larger starting blocks now, depending upon those costs, you know, we could discuss the funding source, whether or not it'd be this capital project, the future, I'm sorry, this capital outlay project, or the future capital outlay project, or out of my operating budget, but there's, there's a lot of different starting blocks out there right now, all different types, depends upon what we have in the pool and their design and all that kind of stuff. So, what I would do, what I would recommend is that we award the base bid and that I would negotiate basically a credit change order to eliminate the refurbishment of the blocks, at least at that point.
Would you be able to do one of the other change orders, like the handicap?
Well, if you recall-
I mean, not the change order, but the one of the other options. Would it equal the cost or is that something you-
Well, again, we were already, my initial recommendation was just base bid because the project was already over budget, okay? We don't have time to rebid and go out, because the project has to be done by June 30th to avoid losing the state aid.
So, you have to, you have to stay within the remaining, the specs, you're taking out something, but you can't add something because of the things that you were-
Yes, we can add, if we decide on a riptide, a key for a riptide starting block, you know, we can negotiate with the existing contractor and come back to you and, you know, if you want to approve it as a change order, you know, we can talk about that. Again, I would report back to the Board with whatever decision or whatever recommendation we might make to you, but at least at this point, in order for this project to move forward, I would award the base bid, we'll get the contractor on board, we'll see if they have some ways to negotiate and then look at starting blocks, that type of stuff, and see what they come back with and then we can report back to you.
Wait, so just so I understand, I'm a little confused, so, so you could, my assumption is the refurbished blocks that were in there meant that we needed to do something with these blocks because they either needed to be replaced or refurbished, we elected initially refurbishing, now you're sort of saying, okay, given what information was learned recently, might be wise to anticipate that these new blocks will be required by the suburban council teams at some point in the future. I'm a little confused, though, by your last comment, so we'll go forward, but we're gonna examine whether we can figure out how to fund this and operationalize this change in the near future or in the-
Well, what I would recommend is we would continue to move forward with the project, the scoreboard and everything else.
And that current vendor that you selected?
In the current low bidder, yes.
Right.
I just need just some time to work with Len and come up with exactly what type of starting block, you know, we, we want, what gives us some flexibility in the future if we want to add these foot chocks, okay? Then, we can either look at buying them directly, installing them ourselves, working with the contractor, you know, with this capital outlay.
Okay.
And again, you know, some of my initial thoughts are, or some of my initial findings are that this is going to cost around $22,000 for these current larger sized, modifiable starting blocks. So, how do we want to fund it, you know, do, would we have money in the existing capital outlay, do we postpone it so we get aid on it the following year, do we decide to do it through operating, through, you know, my operating budget, you know, if there's money at the end of the year and fund it that way?
Okay.
So, there's a couple options, but that, those choices would be, you know, provided to you to make a decision.
Okay.
So, if we didn't proceed with immediately putting in these fancier starting blocks, are the existing starting blocks safe for use currently?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a program with the coaches that, I mean, we've had some welds fail, you know, we fix those, I was just there twice on Monday looking at things and, I mean, they're solid, you know, I know that they would prefer more, I mean, nicer looking, more of an aggregate on top, and that's why we were actually going with the refurbishing, but they are, you know, we can continue with them, you know, to go on.
So, with discussion on the grips, the single versus the double, that would come with, if you, when you decide to replace the blocks, that would be kind of part of that project, correct?
Yeah, the back chocks is one thing, the handles is another item, so, again, that would all be part of the equation that Len and I would try to figure out.
Thank you.
Anyone else, any questions? Thanks, Greg. That's it?
Yep.
Thank you, Jody. Next will be the Board of Education report, who would like to start?
I could start, the lab school barbecue is, this coming Saturday starts at 3:30, so come everyone and all to get great chicken and a fun day, and there's raffle baskets that support the lab school and helps give scholarships to students who may need the funds to go on some of the educational field trips, so.
You have to order ahead?
You don't have to order ahead, you can buy at the door, but come early because sometimes they do run out.
Also, we're talking about upcoming events, Friday night is March Madness, starts at 5:30 at the high school and the gym, it's kind of a community event, it's to raise funds for the Bethlehem Central Community Foundation, and that money is used to provide, you know, give money to teachers for special programs, and they've been raising quite a bit of money in the last couple of years doing it, but this is really a fun event for, for the students and the faculty that are involved in it, and certainly, the money is put to good use. It starts at 5:30, the elementary kind of events are earlier on and then there's some-
Bubble soccer this year.
Oh, bubble soccer this year instead of basketball, but it's in the lower gym.
There's a picture, if you get SNNs, there's a picture, the students will be, you know those big bubble things? They're gonna be, they're gonna invite students to put those big bubbles on and play soccer, so, at least that's what the SNNs say.
I'd get hurt.
I was out of town last week, but did anyone have a chance to go to the Spelling Bee that they held?
Well, I was gonna talk about that too.
Yes, okay.
Again, where they cause, I could, you know, it's the first time I've been able to go and I think we should have a team next year, although Jody and I were doing well until we got to words like-
Tell us the second word.
Mises, no, it wasn't the second word. We both had, we were betting each other, we'd get it correct, and neither of us got it correct. Who would know that Mises starts with a T? That was the same with another one, to me, which was probably the worst with Thonik, it has to do with the underworld and it began with a C-H, C-H-T-H-O-N-I-C, so, interesting words, but every, all the groups are doing well in both sessions and I think they needed to come up with words that were just off the, they might be in the OED, but I'm not sure where else, or how well, how well they're used, but it was a fun event and I can't even remember who won, but, you know, everybody seemed to enjoy and participation was great. And again, BOU, I've been involved probably over 30 years, you know, since the early 80s when it started and it just, they have just done some wonderful things over the years. They used to be, you know, you used to pay a membership to belong to it, they used to have an auction every year, a lot of work, a lot of volunteers that were needed to, to run it, and then to provide special programs for students, and they teamed up with a grant that we had from Oasis years ago, it was Bethlehem Networks Project, and we do things at all levels, elementary level, you know, middle and high school level, even things like finding out volunteer activities for kids that couldn't work yet, but during the summer, but would be able to do something worthwhile, a legal forum which explained to parents, because at that time, parents didn't realize that they were liable for what goes on in their houses in terms of serving alcohol. Even, at one point, the courts allowed cameras in them and I remember judged, the video included Judge Tom Keegan sentencing one of our students for a fatality as a result of a DWI accident, and so, a lot of these things were very helpful for, for the community and they continue to do a lot of work on peer, peer relationships, anti-bullying, et cetera. So, the Spelling Bee was one night that they could actually, I think they raised quite a bit of money, you know, to do those kind of activities with the schools and I think, you know, it's really worthwhile, and there were a lot of sponsors, even for the words, for the individual words that were sponsors, so I just thought it was great and anyhow, so, that was good.
Very nice, Charmaine?
And then Lynn and Jody and I were able to meet with Assemblymember Fahy earlier this week to just talk about some general education issues and funding and, as well as some specific issues that we wanted to talk about in terms of Bethlehem, and she was very supportive and very, listened quite well, we had a full hour with her, and she also offered to come to a Board of Ed meeting if we were, wanted to invite her to, as she think I, she has in the past, address the public and speak for us, so we should consider as a board, if anyone would like to extend an invitation to her, but I thought it was time well spent, I don't know.
Oh, I agree, I mean, usually, they're looking at their watches of the clock after about 10 minutes, so I, I thought the amount of time that she and her, Ginny, spent with us was, you know, was super. It was all parked, in a sense, of the Capitol Conference sponsored by NISBA that started on Sunday, and obviously, funding was probably the major issue that was discussed with everyone, and I know I was down, down at the Capitol all day again today, today was BOSIs and NICE lobbying day, and I visited with several people, including Senator Brezlin, and again, talking about some of those issues, and some of the issues that face BOSIs actually affect us because when we send students to career and technical programs, we get aid back from the state, but it's based, the formula's based on a teacher's salary of $30,000, which maybe in 1990 might have been a net somewhat realistic, but certainly isn't today, and so I think there's agreement that that needs to be increased. It did pass last year in both houses, but somehow, it got lost on the Governor's desk, so, the same thing with, if BOSIs needs to do any improvements, like, if we do a bond or whatever, all of that's exempt from the tax cap calculation, but if BOSIs does something, those costs are warned because they don't get aid, I mean, districts get aid, I think sometimes people misunderstand that, and that, those amounts then are absorbed by the, by the school districts, voted districts, and that amount is not exempt from the tax cap, so that would prevent us from, for example, from doing some of the work that we want to do in our budget. So, needless to say, BOSIs hasn't done any capital improvements because of that, so again, that was passed last year by both houses of the legislature, the Governor sent it over to Taxation and Finance for them to come up with some rules and I, so far, they haven't done anything about that, so, and we also had, let me, there's one more thing, one mention, a STEM Advisory Committee meeting yesterday, and again, there are a lot of community members on this committee besides faculty administrators, and I think they're doing a lot of interesting things, for example, there are 3D printing competitions going on right now, they'll be making either cases for iPhones or jewelry, okay, just having two, and they'll be, they'll be judged later on in the year and, you know, we'll have some prizes for them. There's our STEM pilot program, the enrollment is up and on tech-related courses, these are just some of the things that were discussed at the meeting yesterday. In terms of tracks, STEM tracks within the curriculum at the high school, looking at 3D printing, robotics, UAVs, you know, as possible trackings, and again, this is discussion, nothing is firm, and then there's a K-5 coding pilot and a program called Embed It, it's gonna be piloted at Elsmere and Slingelins in May and June after all the testing is done, actually getting the kids started doing actual coding, computer coding, which goes along with what we're offering now at the upper levels, so I thought, I thought it was a good meeting.
Excellent. Anyone else, anything? Okay. Next, we'll have our presentations, first presentation this evening is our Transportation, and Director of Transportation Cynthia Jurwitz?
Change plans?
Oh.
I'm gonna keep things off.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, everybody. We had our first budget presentation last week and this week, would like to give you just a quick recap of the items that we had covered last week for any of those who missed the information, and then we'll go into the presentations for the various areas on the agenda for tonight. Our total revenues in the baseline budget are up to $94.4 million. Our maximum allowable tax levy under the tax cap is 1.45% this year, and if the budget is ultimately adopted at that level, that will generate another $919,000 in revenues that are available for our program costs. The big unknown is what will happen as the state budget is developed, if the GEA is fully restored, that would mean an additional $1.366 million, so hopefully, we'll hear more on that in the coming weeks, and that would give us the potential to go up to just under $96.7 million in revenues. On our expenditures, we have relatively constrained growth going into the next budget year, we have about a 1.62% increase, and a big reason for that moderation in the expenditures is because of our fringe benefit costs, we are benefiting from TRS and ERS reductions on about $45 million of payroll, that yields some nice reductions in costs for us. With those total expenditures compared to just the baseline revenues, we have a gap of just under $1.3 million. As was noted at the last meeting, this is one of the smallest opening gaps that we've had in our budget presentations in recent years. If, in fact, the tax levy goes up by the 1.45% of the Mattel, that would drop that gap down to about $361,000 before we even consider any of the requested additions that you'll hear about in the coming weeks. So, not a gloom and doom budget by any means, I would say stability would characterize the process for us this year based on these various factors. What we'd like to cover on a district-wide basis is tonight to start the discussion on some of the recommended additions to program. For the non-instructional staff, we are going to recommend that the Board consider increasing our substitute pay rates. Bethlehem is really not any different than what other area school districts are experiencing, the labor market is really shifting as of late, and it's become increasingly difficult to find substitutes to cover staff absences. The minimum wage was just increased to $9, currently, our sub-rate is at $10, and that's not really a large differentiation between the very floor of minimum wage and what we're paying our substitutes for the majority of these non-instructional positions. For custodians, we're recommending an increase up to $12 per hour, and again, that's purely a function of looking at the regional labor market, and that's about in the middle of what the subrates are at other area districts. For all of the other, school monitor, bus attendants, cafeteria staff, and other support staff, where the rates are currently at $10 an hour, we would recommend an increase up to $11 an hour. So, based on average hours, our anticipated budget impact on a district-wide basis would be about $28,000, and we think moving closer to the market rates will make it easier for us to get substitutes for our various programs. So, these increases are not reflected within the budget numbers that you see, so as we get towards the end of the process, if this is something that the Board wishes to approve, we would then add that in and that would increase the baseline budget totals. Yes?
Judy, at one point, we were talking about the impact of the, the minimum wage increase that's being hotly debated and discussed, and what the impact would be on the district. I mean, it's gonna be phased in.
Phased in, right.
We don't know exactly how, but it could conceivably require a bump April 1, so, have you sort of figured out what that, because those rates, those increases might be too low, and there's also gonna be like this, you know, kind of compression effect of, you know, the ripple effect of bringing certain wages up, and, you know, if you're currently paying someone $15 an hour for something, what, you're gonna have to pay them in a new, in a new market.
In discussions with legislators, we've made the case that if you are going to increase the minimum wage, to please do it on a gradual basis for that very reason, the impacts are not just on raising the bottom of the wage scale.
Right.
It's on adjusting everybody else's salaries so that there's value shown for the work that's being done. So, at a minimum, raising these amounts will help put you that much closer to it, hopefully it will align with any of the increases that come to us. Obviously, we have to comply with the law, so if, for instance, it is $15, we're going to need to revise these estimates, it will be more of a budget consequence for us.
Right. So, is there any, is there any way to kind of put a dollar figure on, I mean, you know, it's gonna be phased in, it's going to, you know, definitely be phased in over some period we don't know.
Didn't you, at one time, I thought you said-
I thought at one time you had said, and maybe I'm wrong, but when we'd had a discussion, I think with Assemblywoman Fahy-
Yes.
That it was, it was a couple million dollars, if-
Yes, it was.
Ultimately, to $15 an hour for, when you factor in all the aids that we have and everybody.
Right.
And that's without increasing anyone who may be at 15, who now says, I've been working 10, five, 10 years, why should I be at 15 when someone come in the first day on the job is making that, so.
And that number did include a provision for increasing everybody else's salaries based on that, so, again, just an estimate, but to help drive home the point that this is not just raising the minimum wage to $15, this is about fundamentally increasing the operating costs for every employer in New York State, local governments included.
Right, so we, should we be calculating something in the budget next year that anticipates, because those number, I guess my point is those numbers might be too low, and depending on how it's sort of scaled and phased in, we're gonna have what Matt said, which is compression in other, you know, in other positions that are closer to 15 that are also gonna have to go up because of what the market will-
And remember, all of those other salaries are negotiated, so it's something that's going to take time to come to agreement on what those are, so-
Right, okay.
Every year, we deal with various elements of uncertainty in the budget, so the minimum wage is just another one of those items that's on the horizon for us, so, you know, we can try to round up on these estimates and make sure that we have an adequate provision in there, but-
I think the other day when we were meeting with Assemblywoman Fahy, she talked about that, obviously, the plan would be-
she talked about that obviously the plan would be to phase it in. But when you take that, phasing it in or not, depending on the timeframe, and then you have, you know, the tax cap, and it's not really at 2%. You can see in most districts, many districts are below us. Now you have even more of an issue to deal with moving forward. So I think, at least in raising the rate some, it helps to get us a little bit closer to where it might go if we looked at that each year, seeing what happens, obviously, this year during the session to give us a timeframe of where that, you know, not only for the minimum wage, but also the compounding effect that ultimately that will result in.
Is there any discussion at all about fun? There's a huge discussion taking place that my organization's involved in about the legislature actually funding the, you know, the impact on the healthcare sector because, you know, it's not like they can just raise the price of, you know, their french fries to compensate. So is there any discussion on the education side of backfilling it at all?
Nothing I haven't heard.
At a minimum, they should almost, I mean, they'd have to exempt it from, I would think, the tax cap. I mean, if it's, again, that $10 to $12 is a 20% increase in that factor. So, you know, it's hard to still try to operate within the 2% tax cap and be able to meet the mandated increase in minimum wage, too.
Right. I just worry, because it's so fluid, we're going to have to, we might have to scurry depending on when it's phased in. I mean, they're talking about maybe a January start date, January 2017, but that would affect, you know, our budget. So we got to think about that.
Right.
So those numbers might not be enough.
Right. That's a good point.
Which segments into, is the 10% increase on the school monitors, bus attendants, the dollar an hour? Is it really going to entice us to get more subs? Or should we look at 10 to 12 in that bracket, too? I'm just thinking along those lines. If we're going to be going there anyway, is this something we should address now with that group?
Our thought was it is progress in raising it to $11. Every year, we take the opportunity to evaluate how any changes we make in year one need to be adjusted in year two. So we think, based on the regional market, that $11 is fair for this coming budget year. It might not be the case next year. Again, it's fluid.
Certainly, as we go through each of the presentations, you're going to hear different things that potentially we could add to the budget if we get to, through our process of all of those additions and we feel that something needs to be adjusted or we learn more through the legislative session, we might want to reconsider what those rates are, which wouldn't be till, you know, a good month from now. So we have some time to consider that.
I promise to crunch the estimates quickly when they make a decision on what it will look like. So now it's time for Cindy Jurowitz, our Director of Transportation, to present the overview for her department.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. Good evening, administrators and community. Thank you so much for allowing me to come and talk to you a little bit about transportation tonight. This is my second year as the Director here. And with the help of Mr. John Bizik, my assistant, and John Hazelton, who is our fleet maintenance supervisor, who's not here. But things are running smoothly. We're doing well in transportation. I want to start off by thanking the Board for the extra safety meetings that you've allowed us this year. Our third and final extra safety meeting is happening this Tuesday at 10 o'clock, if any of you are interested. It's going to be a hands-on training outside. Looks like it's going to be a wonderful day. So if you want to pop over, see what's going on, we would love to have you. Which is a good segue, I'm thinking, there we go, into the safety record. So talking about the extra safety meetings that have been provided to us, I've put together a little graph to show you accidents and how they meet with the safety meetings. So as you can see, that there were no additional safety meetings from the 2011-12 school year, right up until this current year, 15-16. And you can see that the number of accidents in total have increased to the point of the 14-15 school year where we had 21 accidents in one year. This year thus far, we have had a total of seven. But if you look at the seven, three of those seven is nonpreventables. They were rear-ended. We were sitting still, we got hit in the rear end. So that's a pretty good number, coming down to four accidents, that were really preventable. And these safety meetings are a huge part of that. The safety meetings allow us, because the state mandates four hours of training per year. They mandate that. And they give us the three hours of what we have to teach on, leaving us that only one hour. So this allows us to take a look at, like, the accidents from last year, things that are concerning our department, and then speak to them directly in the safety meetings. And that's what you'll see on Tuesday if you do pop in. And it should be fun. I'm hearing a lot of good things about the way we're going to do this safety meeting. So thank you very much. It has an impact already. So the transportation budget for the 15-16 and looking at the 16-17 school year, the first line item there is the salaries for the year. As contractual, they need to go up. And that's nothing to do with me, per se, but that's where they are with that. On the equipment line, you'll see that for the 15-16 school year, we've dropped dramatically, actually back down to the level where we should be for the 16-17 school year. The, this year, we were allowed, again graciously by the Board, that we were able to get a plow truck for us. And we haven't used it this year yet. Maybe we should buy one every year so we can have the winter. But no, I'm kidding. We were also allowed to upgrade our technologies within the department and some of the office space within the department. So you can see that the equipment line has come back down. The fuel, the fuel is dramatically lower next year than it is this year. We've had a fantastic year with fuel in the dollar amount per gallon. And that has allowed us to, you know, save a lot. But John did a lot of number crunching. And he took the last four years, the fuel that we've used, the average gallon that we paid for it, and came up with what we real, think is a more realistic number for next year. Of course, we all know that fuel is volatile and it can fluctuate. And it goes way down and it could jump way up. But that's what we're looking at for next year for that. The bus parts and supplies are staying about level, as is the rest of the line items there. So you can see that a budget-to-budget increase of about 13, just a little over $13,000, which isn't too bad. So this slide here talks about the salary and the number of employees. A little bit different. It's not telling you the FTE of these employees, but matter just how many employees. So as you can see, this year, how many drivers we have is compared to what we think might, you know, year-to-year changes with how many drivers, how many routes you may or may not need. With the bus attendance, the mechanics stay pretty steady with that. When we get down to where it says supervisor, office slash clerical, and it says four employees, let me just talk a little bit about that real quickly. The four employees that they're talking about there is, number one, my position, the Director. That's the supervisor within the operations, the office of the department. And then John, who would be the assistant supervisor. He also is in the office, helping me with the operational end of that. The third supervisor is John Hazelton, who is the fleet supervisor. And that's what he does. He's out in the garage, taking care of the buses, assigning work. So he's not on the operational side at all. He's completely over in the garage part of it. And then the fourth position there is our 15-hour-a-week clerical staff who does the payroll for us. So that's how that's broken down a little bit. It may look a little deceiving, like we have four full-time people there. We don't, or four supervisors, that's not how that works. Then we move down to the dispatcher trainer, three positions there. We have a full-time dispatcher, a part-time dispatcher, and a full-time 19A trainer. And then the substitutes and the rest of the line items there with overtime for a total of 4.9, just a little over.
And Cindy, I just wanted to highlight on the substitutes, you'll note that decline from last year to this year. Remember that we had a provision in this year's budgets because we were having all of the field work going on with the capital project. We wanted to put an additional allotment of funds in there to actually take our students to other fields offsite.
Right.
So that's why it's going down lower.
Good point, thank you. Transportation is a big part of revenue for the district in that the state aid is about just a little over 63%, leaving about a 37 or no, 36%.
Local share.
Yeah, local share, thank you. Right. So most everything that we do, a lot of what we do in transportation, is state-aidable. You see that we also have the sale of the buses up there. And I just want to spend just a few seconds talking about that. Those are very conservative numbers for those buses. If we were to trade the buses in when we replace them to the dealer, we'd be lucky to get $2,000 a bus. But we've not done that for the past couple of years. John and I have worked together and we put them out for auction. And we're getting, well, actually, I have the numbers. $36,000 one year and $47,000 another year by putting them out for auction. If we feel like the auction is not going well and we're not getting what we want for the buses, we've actually pulled the bids back and put them out again. So we are doing our best to help with the revenue situation as well.
Can I ask, Cindy?
Sure.
How many buses, the sale of buses, how many do you anticipate selling? Is that?
Well, usually, when we replace a bus, we sell them. So it'll depend on how many buses we replace every year. Last year, it was 10. I think the year before, it was eight, eight.
Thank you.
So let's talk about the bus replacement plan. So this graph is showing us, and let me tell you a little bit about the fleet. So we have 121 buses comprised of 85 large buses, 36 small buses. For the large buses, we're on a 12-year replacement plan. For the small buses, we're on a nine-year replacement plan. When the buses get to those ages, they're running usually around 100,000 miles for each one of them. And while we do a fantastic job and we have a beautiful bus wash that helps with, you know, underneath the carriage and keeping the buses clean and the salt free, at that age, they're still starting to show the wear and tear from all the salt and living in the Northeast, okay? So that's what the buses are usually when we replace them. You'll see that through the graph here, we have had in the past economic hard times, just like everybody was going through. And so, well, let me back it up. With the fleet configuration of 121 buses and the 12- and nine-year replacement plan, if we were going to stay on that true replacement plan to replace all those buses, it would come to 11 buses a year, seven large, four small. We're nowhere near that yet because we're still trying to catch up for over those years where we didn't get enough buses to make this continual replacement plan. So whereas this year, we have a need for 18 buses, okay? If we were going to really look at what we needed, we're only requesting 15. But what we're hoping is that over the next several years, if we get a few more each year, that eventually we get down to the ideal where we're at the even replacement. Need of 11, buying 11, seven large, four small, okay? So this year, we are asking for 15 buses, 10 large, five small. Of the five small, what it is good to note is two of those buses are not replacement. Those are due to growth for student needs, okay? Questions on that? Okay. So seeking 10 large, five small buses at a cost not to exceed the, just a little over 1.4 million. Now, we know that the Board of Education has to make a decision on that. I think it's not needing to be made till March 16th, is that correct?
The next meeting.
Yep. And then, of course, it would have to have voter approval for that as well. So when we were asked, what could help your department? And I guess you're going to get through this throughout the different presentations that you'll see. What could help transportation? Well, I totally look at the routes in the elementary schools. And we have five elementary schools. And each of those schools, we've tried to keep the number of routes in each of those schools down. We do a great job at counting the number of students that get on a bus, looking at that when we're doing the routing and when we're assigning students to buses. And for high school and middle school, we're doing a bang-up job. We have overflow buses, so we're not so concerned about them. But the elementary, you have a lot of elementary kids that ride. So before the 12-13 school year, we were assigning between 30 and 40 students per bus for per elementary bus. Then in the 12-13 school year, we changed the routing. We went to community stops, we went to larger walks, and we increased the capacity. We started assigning between 50 and 66 kids per bus, okay? So that's like a 37% increase per bus that we're doing. And when you're talking about student management and it's the driver who's reasonably responsible or responsible for the reasonable behavior of those students on there, that's a lot to ask of them. So student management does become a problem, which also increases the concerns for principals and administrators as well. So we're asking that we could take a look at each of the elementary schools and add five new routes, one per school, to try to ease up a little bit on the amount of students that we have in there. Lynn?
Cindy, are they 66-passenger buses?
They are. And sometimes 72, so we could go a little higher. We only, the buses are 66-passenger, and that's for the children. So we can go that high with the elementary. We do not go that high with the middle school or high school.
The bigger.
Right, 44 per those.
Do you know the sense of how many, if those buses are actually full? Because I know a lot of parents drop off and drive their kids.
No, 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 we keep track of those numbers. And I actually did write some of those numbers down. So on average, just going through a route at each school, we're talking high 40s, low 50s to mid 50s per bus.
Adding a bus.
On an average.
Adding a bus at each would bring you down to what? Because how many routes are there at each elementary?
They vary for the schools. Because there's also time and distance and how many students are there, okay? But they would bring it probably, we're hoping, back down to around 40 on an average.
Yeah, Diane?
My guess, too, is some of those students have pretty long bus rides?
You would be very surprised, I actually.
I guess what I'm asking is it would help with?
Will it help with that, right? It'll, that's a yes and no answer. I know I sound like a politician, right? It'll help if the mileage is dropped. In other words, if I can take a little bit from a route here and a little bit from a route here and I can avoid that area with the buses, then it could save some timing. If I can't avoid it and the bus has to go through that area anyway to get to their next stop, it may not.
Joanne?
Sorry, go ahead.
Joanne?
As the parent of an elementary student, and I happen to have a car full of kids going to a birthday party, and that issue, the number of kids on the bus,
Yes.
was their number-one complaint, just on Saturday.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, it sounds like it's become a little mayhem for the students. I mean, just listening to them.
It has, because there are, we've had to have parents actually call us and say, "Can I send, you know, a couple of kids home with mine?"
Right.
And that will just depend on how many students are on that bus and riding.
Well, and the other issue is I think bus drivers are assigning seats to kids and trying to manage it. And it just sounds like it's a little, a little too much. So I think it's great that you.
Well, when you, yeah, when you have 50-some-odd kids and they're behind you and you're driving a big vehicle, that's very difficult to manage.
And Cindy?
Yes?
Would you also talk about the day variant schedules and the impacts on the drivers from that?
Yes. Day variant has become increasingly more and more. What we mean by day variant are the students that will go home on Monday, but go to daycare on Tuesday, maybe to grandma's on Wednesday. And you think I'm being facetious and I'm exaggerating, I'm not. And the day variant changes. We get changes from the schools out, the licensed daycares, once a week. Once a week for changes on those. We have some frequent flyers, we call them. They're changing their kids every day. And that becomes increasingly harder for the driver to remember, especially if the student is on their bus to go home and grandma's. Now, where is it they're supposed to go? So this will hopefully help eliminate some of that as well.
Yeah, Diane?
Would that also help, like, with our overtime? I'm looking at page 11, because you have it going from 4:30 to 4:52. But I would think if we had five new bus routes, would that help at all with overtime?
The overtime is not due to the bus routes themselves because those are timed every year. And they're, we're pretty good on the timing with that. year, and they're, we're pretty good on the timing with that. So, that really won't help in that area.
I was looking at the overtime.
Is the overtime more the athletic events and stuff like that?
Correct, correct, correct. Field trips and athletic events, yes.
It's a big number for overtime. Is there a way to reduce?
Well, there's overtime to, not just for those, but say I have somebody that goes out on surgery for six weeks, I've got to cover that with a substitute. So, there's overtime in that too. Somebody calls in sick just for one day, there's overtime there, or for substitutes.
So, but we have, you have a line item for substitutes, so is it? Right, you have substitutes for two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand?
Okay, yeah, so they did split the substitutes out.
Yeah, and that extra hours and overtime is for the extra trips. Remember, it's not all overtime. Overtime only kicks in after eight hours, so even if there's, you know, two extra hours.
Thank you.
It might be at straight time, that's all combined into that particular.
Could we staff that at night? Oh, so, in other words, I'm sorry, Chris, but, so if somebody works like the twenty hours for the week.
Mm-hmm.
They would just get the straight time and that's going into the overtime.
Correct.
Correct. It's in a combined line, it's all extra help, but it's not all at overtime.
Right.
What percentage of that would you say, if you had to venture a guess, or you don't know, would be straight pay?
What?
Like, if they're a part-time driver, twenty hours a week?
That would all be straight pay.
But, it would go into the extra hours, the overtime?
I think she's, would like to know, like, is there?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Is it percentage of the extra hours?
Yeah, I wouldn't know that right off the top of my head, which, which of them, actually in our department, I think there's only a few that hit the forty hours and actually get the time and a half, right, John? Three or four of them.
Yeah, because there's only.
But, most of them, their overtime are straight time.
Okay, yeah, there's only, what, four or five drivers who are at eight hours a day?
I don't even think, yes.
And if that.
Right, right.
So, most are.
And John just gave me a listing of what the overtime covers. Field trips, sports trips, exam runs, delays, early dismissals, training time.
So, it wouldn't save the district that much money if we staffed to reduce overtime? Because the time and a half is minimal and it's more.
Right, right, correct, correct. Charmaine.
Other numbers, you said that there's, how many students can a, a bus accommodate?
On a sixty-six passenger, we can accommodate sixty-six, eight at five. Six to twelve, forty-four.
Wasn't there something, you said seventy? No.
Well, no, no, there, there, we have seventy-two passenger buses, so half of that for the, so what is that, forty-eight? I'm not good at math here, help me out.
And thirty-six.
For the high school, six to twelve, and up to seventy-two passing, seventy-two kids. But, that would be three to a seat for the elementary.
That's a lot of kids.
That's a lot of buses.
Yeah, but at the same time, and I understand sort of the activity level on the buses and the issue of supervision, but it's also hard to sell to the community that you want to put forty kids on a bus that could take seventy.
Well, I think it's a safety issue.
I understand the supervision issue, but, you know, when you have to answer to taxpayers, they'll say, well, that bus is two-thirds full. So, how would you, how would you respond to that?
The bus is, is two-thirds full depending on when you're looking at it. I suppose when they're all on, it would be two-thirds full if you were at forty kids as opposed to seventy-two. But, right now, on any given date, I could have somebody wanting to take somebody else home with them. Or, I could be saying, switching over from a daycare to back home again, and you're adding and subtracting to those numbers all the time.
And realistically, can you really fit three kids to every seat?
No, not comfortably.
I mean, based on the size of fifth graders, you couldn't.
And, and when you're talking elementary and they're bringing in their snow pants and their boots, and we're just now starting to get a relief from that, it's, that's a lot.
That's a lot.
I think, the other thing is, I think you would be surprised by the community support for, especially with elementary parents who would be thrilled at kids not being crowded on a bus and potentially shorter bus rides. Some of those bus rides are long.
Well, and, and with the potentially fewer amount of kids comes the, the student management problem, and less kids on a bus, less problems on a bus. And, you would get huge community support from that and principal support as well.
Cindy? Have you done any cost comparisons on having an aide on those elementary buses to help with the student management versus adding these additional runs?
Well, here, here's the deal with that, okay? The aides that you would put on these buses would be there strictly for disciplinary, and that is not state-aidable. Any bus attendant that we now have on a bus is there because of an IUP, and that is state-aidable. So, any cost that you would do, and it would be a minimum of four hours for a bus attendant, would all be on the district, so to speak.
But, it would be interesting to see how that.
Would play out.
Plays out against adding additional runs.
What you're saying is the additional runs, those drivers and the transportation are aidable at?
Correct.
Sixty-three percent or whatever you're saying.
Right, right. Right. Yeah? Any other questions?
I'll make a comment, even though I hate to do it.
Well, I, I would like, if you could, if you could show us what your current bus routes are this year, and if you had an additional run at each, or additional route at each elementary.
What that would look like.
What, what you anticipate it could be, so we could see an impact.
And time too, time on bus.
Yeah, yeah, if there's any impact on that.
Although, we understand from, you know, what you said, that it's, it's hard to pinpoint any particular route or.
No, but she, she could go based on today, this year's, and if you had an additional bus run at each school, what, what would your new projections be?
What would it look like?
So, my comment is, I, the, the slide on the bus replacement, and I understand why you're asking for fifteen and why you need that, but I also think that there are members of the community who will look at that, and, you know, this is a separate item on the ballot.
Correct.
And, I think we'd have to do a lot of education about why that number is needed. Because people won't watch the tapes, they won't come aboard meetings to understand why that number is being requested. All they'll see is, well, from previous years, you were asking for six, and then you asked for ten, and now you're up to fifteen. I think certain taxpayers will look at that. I understand why you're asking for it.
Yeah, and I thought that, you know, in the past, that we had tried to educate to some degree of the bus replacement plan and what not bringing the buses up to where we needed them. And, I understand, we couldn't. When the economy is down the way it was, that is the way it is. I, I get that. But, the longer you keep these buses, the more you're going to pay in all the out-of-service repairs, the breakdowns that you may have, the battery repairs that you need, and then DOT can still say, I'm sorry, that bus is off the road. So, it's kind of a, you can pay me now, or you can pay me later.
And I totally understand that, and I totally support the department and their request. I just think, because people may not see the tape or may not hear what you're saying to us now.
Right.
Fifteen buses, brand-new buses will be, could potentially be a hard sell.
Well, that, that would be our responsibility to make sure the communication that goes out, the newsletter announcing, you know, the budget.
Right.
Reason for it, and, you know, the age of the buses and, and how many mileage are the mileage of those buses. We've had charts like that in the past that show the age and mileage and, yeah.
Right, and that's another good point of how much is aidable on those buses as well.
The debt service kind of rotates.
Yeah.
Each time, just one comes off, another comes on.
Exactly.
On that five-year lease purchase.
So, so your goal is to get to eleven and eleven ideally?
Correct.
And, what, when do you forecast that we would hit that goal, so it would be eleven, eleven every year?
That would depend on how much the community would allow us to buy each year. So, each year, we, we would ask for several more just to play catch-up with that.
How? Yeah, I guess how many buses do we really need? How many are we behind, I guess, is more of the question to get us to the eleven and eleven? Are we behind?
Let's just say Cindy's initial request, when I looked at her figures, were more along the shock and awe line, and I'm like, we are not getting that many buses. So, again, Cindy is looking at it from the operational standpoint of, you know, some of these buses that are slated for replacement are well over a hundred thousand miles.
Right.
There were some a hundred and twenty-four, a hundred and thirty-two thousand.
Right.
And again, with some rust-type issues. So, what she typically, when we have these conversations, she, her job is to tell me what the need is, and we look at that to make it fit into something that's a reasonable overall plan, and there are typically deferrals of these purchases into later years. So, it's really the deferral portion that we can start to shrink if we, and when you say increase, we're not talking increase from the fifteen beyond that, we're talking a few more than the eleven each year until we get caught up again.
But, I think it might be, if Charmaine's talking about selling it to the community, knowing exactly how far behind we are with the number of buses, and show how we're decreasing that number each year to get to the goal. Because most of the people that I'm friends with that have children in the district, they want safe buses. I mean, that's just a fact. And, I think if we put that information out there, it would be really beneficial. Obviously, we can't buy thirty at one time, but to show that we're getting there.
For example, if we put out, maybe if we bought fifteen for X amount of years, when would we be caught up to go down to that eleven?
Okay.
Something like that, would it be four years, five years?
You just wanted to.
Let's face it, we vote on buses every single year.
Right.
I mean, last year, we voted on ten, this year it's fifteen. You think people are really paying attention year to year whether we're buying ten or fifteen? I mean.
They may not compare year to year, but they'll say, they'll see the number fifteen. And, they may not be people who have kids who are going to be bused to school. We, we're, the, the budget goes before the entire community.
I mean, historically, it doesn't get as many votes as a regular budget, but the community is supportive of a replacement plan too.
But, it shows us meeting a goal. I mean, if that's our goal.
Might help if we're trying to convey what we want to get to, it might be helpful. Yeah.
And again, I think, and then, then the newsletter that goes out to the community. Put a blurb in there about that.
Right, right. I think that would be great.
Okay.
Cindy, I just have one quick question on the safety record slide.
Yes.
Obviously, there was a large bump up in number of accidents last year.
Yes.
Do you know how many of those were related to the horrific weather we had last year?
None.
Really?
Yeah. I mean, that's good for us, because that just shows the professionals that we have driving out in that weather, and we did have some really dicey ones, and none of those were related to that.
So, did anything else change besides your safety meetings? Like, did you get rid of some drivers who weren't the very good drivers? Or?
Since that point in time, yes, actually, we have.
Okay, so, there were other variables that weighed in, in addition to the.
Not that many, but yes.
Okay.
Yes. Charmaine.
The, the point-six FTA.
Yes, we haven't got there yet, but go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, tell us.
Okay, so I did talk about the supervisors that we have in the department now, okay? And, we do currently have three supervisors. Two of us in the main office that take care of the operational side of the house. And, the first thing that I need to remind everybody is that transportation is a twelve-hour operation. So, the director comes in, I come in at six o'clock in the morning and stay till whenever, depending on what kind of a day it is. My assistant, John, will come in at eight and, or eight-thirty and work till five-thirty, thus covering that five-thirty to five-thirty shift, that operation, that transportation runs. The third supervisor is John Hazelton. He's the fleet maintenance supervisor. That's all he does. So, there's really only two supervisors that are in the office taking care of the operational side of it. We have two dispatchers, one that comes in five-thirty in the morning, works to one-thirty, two-thirty, I'm sorry, and the part-timer comes in at one-thirty and works till five-thirty. So, we're asking for an additional part-time supervisor to help us with the ever-increasing workload that we're having. Now, you had asked a question about what did the staffing look like in years past with regard to supervisors, I'm guessing is where you're going with that. So, in two thousand and two to two thousand and six, and I'm sorry, I have to take my glasses off so I can see. I came here in two thousand and two. So, from two thousand and two to two thousand and six, we had three supervisors. The director, the assistant director, and again, a fleet maintenance supervisor. In two thousand and six, we brought John onboard as an assistant supervisor to help us in the office, doing the things that he needed to do in the dispatch office, handing out keys, doing POs and all the accounting work that he does. And, so we had the director, the assistant director, the assistant supervisor, and the fleet maintenance supervisor. Then, with all the economy doing everything that we did in July, in two thousand and twelve, we lost a supervisor, and that happened to be our fleet maintenance supervisor. So, that brought us back down to three supervisors. The director, the assistant director, and the assistant supervisor. But, because we didn't have a fleet maintenance supervisor, the director was out in the garage doing that, so that left us only with two supervisors in the operations side of the house. And, that was from July two thousand and twelve to July, or, two thousand and twelve to July of two thousand and fourteen. In July of two thousand and fourteen to December of two thousand and fourteen, we were down to two supervisors. That's when Al left to go to Shen, and it was John and I doing it all. We still didn't have a fleet maintenance supervisor. So, I was doing that work as well as the director work, and John was picking up anything and everything that we could. But, in December, we were able to hire John Hazelton, so now we are back to the three. John out in the bus garage, and John and I, the other John and I, in the office. And, that's that. Do you have a question on that?
I have a question for you, actually.
Yep.
The payroll part, because we have now a HR director, will the payroll still stay?
Yeah, the payroll that's done out in the various departments, whether it's transportation or O and M, is reviewing the timekeeping information, the request for leave, and then the submission of that data in for payroll and for processing on our end.
Thank you.
Did I, did I explain that well enough? Charmaine, did you have another question on that? Okay.
Anyone else, any questions for Cindy? Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you very much.
Nice job. Next, we'll have the operations and maintenance and Greg Nolte.
Good evening. Having been accustomed to being up here for the past three years repeatedly giving you presentations on the twenty-million-dollar project, it's refreshing to be up here to talk about our, our operating budget, so. So, tonight, positive presentation, positive operations. Operations and maintenance is the cost center for all district operations, facilities, grounds, utilities, custodial and maintenance services, and health and safety. So, I'm going to run through the slides quickly. If you have any questions, you know, feel free to stop me. Okay, our budget, two thousand and sixteen-seventeen budget is about five-point-three-three-eight million dollars. I'm going to start off with the total, that's budget to budget, about fifty-six thousand dollars less. In a time where everything seems to be costing more, this is a nice trend that hopefully will continue. Salaries, you'll see a good decrease in salaries. That number in two thousand and sixteen-seventeen includes contractual raises, insurance buyouts. We did receive or gained benefits from a lot of employee breakage through some resignations and a good amount of retirement, so it was quite busy this year hiring staff. Equipment and vehicles, I actually have a later slide, which I'll talk about in detail regarding that. Utility costs, a great reduction of about seventy thousand dollars. This is the seventh consecutive year that I've reduced utilities. I've said it in presentations in the past, it's the gift that just keeps giving and giving. We are still with OC and BOSI's, we actually have a new contract with them. They're the ones that we purchase our gas and electric from. The good news is that gas, the commodity itself was reduced by about twenty percent. However, electric increased in its rate of about eight-point-seven-five percent. The numbers here do not reflect any benefits that we are going to be receiving from our energy performance contract and the solar array, which hopefully will be coming online in the next year or so. So, that's a very positive towards, towards our budget. Contracted services and projects, you'll see a slight increase there. We have, there's a number of items that we review, line items in my budget regarding contracted services. Some went up, some went down. In the whole evaluation, there's, there's really no trend of any great concern regarding contracted services. Special projects that are part of that actually increased about thirty-five thousand dollars that is included in that number, and I have a slide that will detail those projects. projects. Supplies, both custodial and maintenance, again, many line items, some up, some down. I do want to increase certain programs that we have, such as our gym floor refishing program that we do in-house. I want to hit all of the gyms and not just our competitive gyms. There's a good amount of AEDs, these defibrillators that we have in all, all the schools that require replacement, so that's in there as well. And I do want to expand our in-house painting program, primarily outside parking lots, that type of stuff. Now that construction's done, we have a lot of faded lines and a lot of neat there. BOCs, nominal increase that they're charging us. One change, however, in that budget is that they're going to start doing our fire inspections. So, that'll happen next year. We won't be privatized, or we won't be having a contractor do that, and we will get aid on that service. So, overall, positive time, positive budget for, for O and M. Staffing, you'll see thirty-eight custodians, fifteen maintenance staff. Both line items are down primarily on both sides because pretty much of the breakage that we experienced there. Substitutes and miscellaneous. Miscellaneous is summer help and night bonus. I'm not changing the level of summer help that we hire, you know, during the eight to 10 weeks in the summer. I do, however, expect less custodial substitute hours this year. At least I'm crossing my fingers, number one, because we don't have a construction project that we are cleaning up after. And as well, the past year, we had a number of people out on long-term illness where I had to hire custodial sub to cover that long-term illness, and we spent, and we really stretched our custodial sub list to, to all ends. So, overtime, a slight increase there. If you recall, overtime includes three categories: use of facilities, which is our outside groups, and then two interior, and that's school-related overtime, and then maintenance overtime, all right? The in-house stuff accommodates for about, or accounts for about 58% of the overall budget, over, of the overtime budget, and then 42% is the, the outside, outside usage. We pretty much only have overtime on the weekends, okay, to cover either our, our in-school overtime or just used by, by outside groups. All of the overtime is tracked by trade, by group, whether or not it's snow, which we haven't had too much of, which is great, alarm drops, emergencies, unplanned repairs, that type of stuff. Okay, equipment. Last year, we had 192,000. I'm proposing 214,000 this year. Our largest piece of equipment, I'm just going to point out, 1978, 38 years old. So, as you can imagine, when this breaks, this is used in our, our grounds department quite extensively, difficult and costly to repair. So, we're looking to replace that. The cube truck, I should, I should have wrote, it's, it's our food truck, or one of our delivery trucks that we deliver the food to each of the schools. The other one I'll point out is the, the two garden tractors with snow blowers. This is just potentially working a little smarter, allowing our custodial staff at those two schools that usually come in to plow off our sidewalks to work a little more efficiently instead of using a walk-behind snow blower. So, I do expect some reduction in, in overtime for snow as far as that goes. Same thing, working smarter is these rider sweepers that we have. We already have one at the middle school. It just helps, you know, these schools are big, both high school, middle school, and this allows supervisors to get around and to be working as they're getting around and supervising the staff at night. Special projects. Last year, we were at 94,000. This year, I've proposed $129,000 in projects. Since the bond, this year, we, this current year, we had additional security cameras because the bond didn't cover every last nook and cranny of high school, middle school transportation and O and M. So, this would actually be the second addition of additional security cameras in, in the district. There is a mandate out now that they have changed the way handicap signs look. And we're going to have, we're going to be required to basically change out all of our handicap parking signs to this new, new logo. So, we would probably buy all these signs and replace these in-house ourselves. There is a proposal, we talked about this with the administrators, about water bottle filling stations at every single school. Apparently, there is a desire for hydration in the district. The environmental club at the high school actually has purchased and raised funds for two stations here, which have been ordered, and I think we're waiting for the second one, and they're going to be installed, I would imagine, the next month or so. But this basically gives us a water bottle, bottle filling station at, at every school. We have two security panels at the high school, and sometimes they're side by side, and it gets confusing, and then we have false drops, and the police come, and they're not real happy with us. So, this is, is a consolidation of, of those two panels into one. We have the large SES program during summer at Eagle. It has caused some operational issues with the Eagle staff there, so there's a whole separate door and separate entrance that they use. And in our interest of security, we would like a similar door access system that we have at our schools at another door. So, we would be looking to put that in at Eagle. The sound system, presently, I think we roll out a portable PA system, and that's what is used in Gym B.
Where was it built?
When it was built, yes. When the EPC project is done, in fact, we're actually receiving comments on the energy performance contract right now. So, we are hoping to be under construction, hopefully in the next couple of months, doing all of these energy measures with the energy performance contract. One of those projects is basically removing the ceiling, the ceiling in Gym B and putting all new lights in there. So, at that point, once the ceiling is down, then we would design an appropriate sound system. So, that's a, that's a big chunk of money right there, so.
Is that the main gym?
That...
Competition gym. Yeah, it's the lower gym.
B gym, yeah, lower. You also have C gym, which is lower.
That'll be subgrade, right?
SED allows qualifying small projects to flow through our general fund, and no more than $100,000. Little history, in 2013, '14 was the first time that we, we did this. We had phase one of the high school pool. We, we replaced some structural steel columns that were very deteriorated. In 1450, we had phase two, which was a lot of ceiling work and the soffit work. And presently, right now, it is actually before the board, we're, we're looking to approve the phase three, which is a new scoreboard system and replacement of all the doors. We would expect work to start shortly after that, and it must be done, again, before June 30th in order for us to get this aid here. So, I am proposing in 1617, a phase four of the high school pool, which we're looking at everything from the diving boards to an ADA lift, to some other finishes if we can afford it. So, that would be my, my phase four recommendation. Requested O and M addition. We're looking to add one FTE, a custodial worker, to the night staff at the middle school. This would bring us to our 2009-10 staffing level. As a general guideline, we use square foot analyses, how much square footage does a custodian clean. Presently, the middle school has the highest in the district. It's about at 31,100 square feet per custodian. This add would bring it down to about 28,000 square feet. The high school right now is about a 28,000, 28,800 square feet. So, we team-clean at the middle school. We have two teams of three and a floater. We'd probably create a two-team four as we, with this additional person. This would allow us to do more detailed cleaning. Presently, we actually defer some cleaning activities to break weeks or even to the, the summertime. There is a lot of stress on the night staff because, you know, our buildings are used more now than they ever have been. There's a lot of setups and takedowns that are done every single night. Of course, this takes away from them doing the cleaning. It also will help, there's, there's an expectation of cleaning levels in this district, and this will help attain that as well. In December of 2015, the architects and the district completed our building condition survey and our five-year facilities plan. This is available on the web. It's about three or four inches thick, has lots and lots and lots of proposed projects. The architect and, and the plan is divided into three different categories: high, medium, and low priorities. High priorities are expected, or, you know, are, are meant to be done in the first one to two years. The medium priorities are three to four, and then the low priorities are the, the five plus. It's just the way the five-year facilities plans are kind of set up. So, I'm, I'm setting the stage potentially for a next round of projects should the, the board desire. So, what, what the schedule would like is the board's facility committee would probably start reviewing this high priority, which the architects identified, about $44 million worth of items, okay? Then, an overview and recommendation would be presented to the community in the spring. Again, the goal would be to develop a bond. As you may recall, when we developed the 2013 $20 million bond, there was a desire for more smaller-scale bond projects, 20 to 30, $30 million, instead of a, a massive $93 million project. So, this, I'm just working along that lines. So, there is, and I'm reading, I know from Judy, that there is our newly-created capital reserve account, which was, you know, which was created in anticipation of these future projects and can be a funding source, basically, to reduce, you know, the bonding amount. As of June 30th, 2015, the reserve is about at $1.625 million. So, I wanted to plant that seed with the board, and I'll open up for questions at this point.
Greg, when, when would you be looking for, I know you said maybe this coming spring or not, but if, if we did something late spring, when's the earliest any construction could begin based on timelines that you're used to and with SED approval and all that?
Yeah.
So, when, when are you talking actual work beginning?
We worked out a, a timeline, and so to, to have a shovel in the ground in the spring of 2018, and working that back, basically, summer of 2018, between SED review, between design, we would, you know, be looking for a vote, or, or at least potentially putting out a bond around September of this year.
So, anything after that, then you're pushing it to the following construction season?
Yeah, I mean, the goal is to, to get out to bidding January, February, you know, of 2018, when contractors are hungry, when things are, are, when they're eager to get their, their base work for the year. But there's a lot of prep. I mean, you cannot go out for a bond vote in, not something of this size in, in April or May, because you would lose, you know, the summer construction.
Hmm, okay.
Which means that potentially, if it pushes it off another year, you might be looking at escalation and more cost, so.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
Oh. Going back to the water bottle filling stations.
Yes.
Which I think is terrific. There was a point where I heard that some of the drinking fountains didn't work appropriately. Are those all fixed now, or the filling stations are on top of drinking fountains that we have existing, or?
First question, the custodians know if, if a fountain is not working, you know, either close it off, turn it off if it's leaking, and then it goes on our, our work order list for our plumber, okay? I believe, I think, last time this, this came up, there was a number at the high school that weren't working.
Right, that's...
And I think there was a wave of correcting a lot of those. That's not to say that there isn't one that isn't working right now, but the custodial staff know at each building that if there's a problem, to, to let us know, okay?
Okay.
The new stations, some are retrofits, okay, and some are not. Some, some of these are brand-new stations, okay, that typically are going to go, like in the cafeterias or outside of the main gym, gym lobbies.
Okay, that's one. And then, the other question I had was the board, we had talked at some points about, and this is probably part of the larger facilities plan that is in the big binder, and I know the committee is evaluating different recommendations and so forth. But we had talked about the auditorium in particular. I assume that's sort of on deck for some...
That's, that's one of the priority ones, I believe, part of the auditorium.
Yeah, and we have actually three different options, depending upon what the board and the community is potentially looking to do in that auditorium. But that is actually on the $44 million high priority items.
Okay, so that $44 million priority area, that's not the 2018 project list?
Yes.
So, the earliest you could kind of do some, do anything of that scale is 2018?
Correct.
Okay, so not great, but that, it is what it is.
The EPC project, we, we've been in SED for over 14 months, and they finally just, they picked it up and they gave it to a consultant to review. So, it would have been nice if they did that 12 months ago, but it is what it is.
Right, the efficiency of our government.
Yeah, yeah.
I have two questions.
Christine?
I have two questions. On page 22 with the high school Gym B sound system, could that be part, and I don't know if this is a question for Judy, part of a capital improvement project? It could be incorporated into something along those lines?
Sure.
Okay. And then, my other question was, how old is the Impala and the cube truck?
Um, I don't know.
1975.
I didn't know it was so long ago. Could you put the year for what, Charles?
Um, I, I don't know. I know the cube truck, actually, we're using it on a very limited basis because the body is so rotted. The actual, this is a very big box. It sits on the frame, and the, the side supports are just beyond repair. So, we are, we are not using it for any heavy moves. We're using our other cube truck for that. We'll put it on the back road at, at the high school, but I'm really, I just, I don't want to lose it on Delaware Avenue.
Okay. So, we don't have high hopes for the auction value when we sell that one?
You'd be surprised what people buy.
I don't know. The body damages, you know, metal's what they...
But the Lumina is, is our oldest vehicle, or the, the oldest passenger, and it's, it's pretty bad as, as well from, just from a, a condition standpoint.
Do you know if they both have high mileage? I'm assuming one's falling apart, I might assume.
Um, it's something where I don't think it's, I don't think it's 120, 30,000 miles. You know, some of these vehicles are just driven school to school to school, and that's it. So, you're getting more abuse by, by the weather that they've had over the many years.
Lynn?
Yeah. Greg, can you remind me where we already have security cameras in place?
Okay.
I know that was part of the bond, but I just...
Yep, at the high school, interior and exterior. Middle school, interior, exterior, transportation, exterior, O and M, exterior.
Okay. So, then, these additional ones will go, I know you've described it before.
Um, it's, it's interesting. The bond only covered so much, and we've been working with the deans and the principals about where they've been having issues, and there are dark spots and areas of concern in certain public places, the, the gyms, outside. There, there, we just don't have any coverage at this point.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, Greg.
Appreciate it.
Okay, and next up is our technology presentation by Sal.
Good evening, board members, Ms. Monroe, community members. It is once again my pleasure to be in front of you and serve the pleasure of the board for the last six years. This year, we also have a very favorable budget picture to share with you. Before I go into the numbers, I just wanted to make some general overall comments. Over the last few presentations, you had an opportunity to see some of the things we were doing... were doing within technology, in the state of the schools address that Ms. Monroe did a few weeks ago. We highlighted items like our one-to-one initiative at the fifth grade level, that has been a tremendously well-received program. We've improved access in those classrooms, and those teachers are fully taking advantage of that new technology that we placed there last year. We also had reported to you that the capital project was an overwhelming success. Our objective during that project was to fortify or create a wonderful foundation for our technology program. We, again, replaced all of our, most of our wired and wireless network technology, and we also added some technology in the instructional classrooms at the elementary school. So now that gives us the foundation and the, kind of the springboard, to take a real close look in the future at our instructional program and how we can improve the access, not only access, but also our transformation in the classroom to more of a digital, a digital approach moving forward. Other objectives or other initiatives that we're working on, this spring, for the first time, we'll be implementing the New York State Alternative Assessments via computer-based testing. That's an interesting challenge for us in testing that special needs population, but we're prepared for that. And then subsequently, although we're not participating in any field testing at the three-through-eight level with the computer-based testing that's coming out, we are watching our colleagues locally very carefully so that we can model our program in the future in regard to computer-based testing of the three-through-eight New York State program. The information that we're receiving now is that although we'll be required to do to some extent computer-based testing in the following year, we'll have some discretion over the grade level and the subject area that we actually test within that year. So there's kind of a gradual scaffolding of our capacity in that regard. And I think we'll go on to our presentation. So looking at the, kind of the nuts and bolts of our technology budget, the bottom line is a very modest budget-to-budget increase. If you take a look at our salaries, they're slightly declined in the 16, 17 year. There's two reasons for that. One, we did have a retirement within our department, so we have some small breakage to take advantage of. And also, as you're going to see on the next slide, we're decreasing our non-instructional technology budget in the area of our training related to our student information system. As recall, we replaced that several years ago. We're now comfortably in our second year, and the need to do the intensive training that we had once done to get to the new system is no longer as great a need, so we'll be reducing that budget line item. Equipment, through the generous support of the board through the last several years, and even to make note in the years where we had some very difficult, challenging fiscal times, the board's approach has always been to make sure that we had adequate technology resources and not regress in that area. I applaud you for that. We, I think, are starting to finally see the benefit of that. That equipment line, I'm asking us to hold that steady for two reasons. That will allow us to continue on a very appropriate replacement cycle of older technology, so desktop and laptop computers that we tend to get five to seven years out of, we'd like to replace those on that schedule. And then the mobile technology, which tends to be a little less durable, we're replacing on an average of four, sometimes five-year schedule. The other piece to that is access, access, access. Speaking for myself and our instructional colleagues, in the areas where we have improved access by putting Chromebook carts in the classroom, we have seen nothing short of some miraculous utilization of technology. You can expect that anytime you're sharing technology, I always use the analogy that if I was a teacher and I had to share a blackboard between classrooms, it would be very frustrating, and I would not be very motivated to implement any new strategies and/or programs if I don't have access to something. So what that budget line, keeping that solid, will allow us to do is to add more devices at all levels. And let me speak to that just briefly, what we plan to do. With the overwhelming success of the one-to-one pilot in Chromebooks this year at the fifth grade level, we clearly, in consultation with the principals and our instructional staff at K-5, we're going to expand that to fourth grade. We fully expect to build out all the fourth grade sections next year with Chromebook technology in a one-to-one classroom model. So the devices no longer leave the classroom, the teacher has full discretion over when and it's when it's appropriate to use and leverage the technology in the elementary schools. What that allows us to do is the resources that already exist at the elementary level, that were once shared K-4, now are compressed in their sharing so that the increased access will occur at the K-3 level as well. And we do have a very healthy supply of iPads that we're still using, primarily K-2. So there's the effect on the elementary program. At the middle school, kudos to our administration led by Mr. Klugman and the instructional staff that participate in something called the middle school advisory, technology advisory committee. That's an extraordinarily active committee in identifying their needs and making recommendations to the district. I am very proud to say that two years ago, through, again, your support, we added several laptop carts, which were allotted more based on grade level and house. But last year, through some conversations, we came up with more of an innovative approach, and through, again, the leadership of the people that I mentioned, we came up with an RFP process. The notion was, rather than just put technology in classrooms for technology's sake or sheer equity, how could we better serve the needs of our students and those staff who were prepared at that time to leverage technology? So what we did, or what they did, I should give credit to them, is they came up with a request for a proposal. We had 17 applications. I'm also proud to say that those applications came from, were invited, all subject areas were invited to participate, all grade level and subject areas, it wasn't limited to just the core subjects. And of the 17 proposals, we funded 10. So we added 10 Chromebook carts this past summer so that we're ready for the school year. And in doing so, of particular note was part of the commitment that the RFP process required, and that was not only did you, would you show as a classroom teacher how you would leverage the ability to have the accessibility of the technology and transforming your classroom into digital resources and access to information, but how were you personally going to grow professionally? What were you, what steps were you going to take to be prepared for this new, this new paradigm within your classroom? And lastly, and most importantly, how were you then going to turnkey what you learned and your best practices with not only your subject area colleagues, but with those colleagues across the building, so that we could build future capacity? And since we really feel that that program has worked out tremendously, we're going to repeat it again this year. Those RFPs are generally invite, or those people are generally invited to participate in the spring so that we can identify the successful proposers, and then we can have them ready to go for the next year. So we feel very strongly in repeating that a second year. I guess of particular note is if you're keeping track, if you're the mathematician in the audience, you'll realize that if we do this, this next year, we are going to position ourselves in the next few years to look at a one-to-one model in the middle school. And that's a trend that you'll find not only regionally but nationally, providing access to students in a one-to-one model, not a take-home model, but a classroom model, is very attractive. So we're positioning ourselves to, kind of, on a trajectory to entertain that as a possibility within the coming years. At the high school, I work very closely with the subject area supervisors, with the high school administration, in determining the needs here. Of particular note, we've also added some Chromebook carts, very popular technology. For those of you who know that they are an inexpensive device that allows us to access, from a cloud perspective, our resources, and we've now reached the point where not only they're cost-effective, but the battery life lasts an entire instructional day, and they're very attractive as far as a technology tool. Here at the high school, we did pilots this year in, with ELA. There's several English teachers who are using those, science and social studies. And now the other departments want to follow suit, so next year, we're looking at making sure that Chromebooks would be available in world language, in social site, increasing availability in some of the other functional areas. So there's the, kind of, the synopsis for why I would urge you to keep the equipment funding where it was. Software, that's state-aided software, reimbursement based on student enrollment, pretty state for, we pay for different licensing within the district, really no changes there. Materials and supplies, many of the things that we provide in support of our instructional program are now more disposable, more consumable of in nature, headphones, cabling, those kinds of things, we have an increased need in that area, and we want to make sure that we're printing supplies, those kinds of things come under that category. Technology purchase services, there, you're going to find expenses like our student information system, what else would be considered there? We've got repairs, contractual wiring, professional development for my staff, we try to keep our staff, we've got some very sophisticated systems here. I like to, I try to provide opportunities for my staff to stay current with some of the technologies and best practices, especially around the areas of security and cybersecurity, very important and dear to our heart. We also pay for our communications within our department through that type of funding. Bosie's, as you may recall, we do a lot through NERIC and Bosie's. All of our wide-area network services, all our connectivity around the district is provided through Bosie's, through contract with Time Warner. We purchase our email, hosted email, exchange service through Bosie's, and a variety of other services that fall into that category, including our maintenance. All of our maintenance for all of our networking hardware is reimbursed through contracts with Bosie's. Now, that's a slight increase there, because if you're, if you're keeping a scorecard, we just finished a capital project. You remember, the project was basically two years, so a lot of the technology purchases occurred in the first year of that project, which would, given a standard one-year warranty period, put us somewhere in the middle of this school year. So last budget year, we asked for a modest increase to cover the prorated amount of our maintenance, the expected amount that was going to increase based on all the new equipment that we owned. But now, this coming school year, 16, 17, this is where the bulk of the full year maintenance will hit us to protect all of the investment that we made with the capital project. So there's a little bit of an uptick in the Bosie's line there. So overall, budget-to-budget, a modest increase, $17,000 year to year. And then, just a breakdown, a little bit more specific specificity on our salary and position information. We have 10 current employees in our department, that includes myself, a network administrators, database managers that take care of our student information system, our chief information officer who also works in that area. We have a computer technician, a help desk technician, and a senior systems engineer. So the 10 of us manage the entire department, and again, based on the fact that we had a retirement, there's some breakage there, we have a little decline in our salary line for the next school year. Also, summer help, it's more summer help than overtime. We traditionally have always hired and augmented our staff during the summer. This past year, I'm proud to say we brought six staff, temporary staff onboard. Additionally, I'm happy to report that all six of them were form, well, are, I should say former, were graduates of our school district and participants in our student help desk. So for the first year, all six were kind of homegrown and trained by us, and I can't tell you how much of an advantage that was in having them already be so familiar with our infrastructure and our systems based on their experience in the student help desk. And last but not least, I mentioned already that being solidly in our second year, the need to have the intensive training that we did in the initial phases of the student information system implementation are no longer necessary. We don't want to back off totally, we still want to keep the capacity of our turnkey trainers, the ability to keep them current on the newest versions of Aspen, and provide some professional development this summer in the way of birds of a feather or shared collaborative, more collaborative training in workshop kind of format this summer with our teachers. Our focus now will be past just the basic features of the system and trying to drive more intricate utilization, and more importantly, how our system can be leveraged by combining that with the learning management system and how it interacts with Google. So that's kind of our plan for that. And that is actually my presentation for this year. We kept it short and sweet, and now I'd love to open it up for any questions that you may have. I'll make one note before we ask that, and in the past, we had a pretty healthy discussion last year on not only protecting our investment, but how do we drive better utilization and benefit instructionally? And our promise to you, Jody and I, last year promised you that we'd go back and spend this year thinking more about that and thinking thoughtfully about that, how we could come up with a multi-pronged strategy. And what you're going to hear, and this is not a spoiler alert, but you're going to hear much more about that in the instructional presentation coming up, I believe, the first week of April, because that, our strategies revolve solely around the instructional practices of that individual or the strategies that we'll share with you. So with that said, be happy to entertain questions.
Yes, Mike.
Sal, you mentioned the one-to-one Chromebook program is going to bump down to the fourth grade this year. Is it your vision that that will keep bumping down year to year, or is there an age level where it's really not appropriate?
So I thought you were going to ask a different questions, and I want to anticipate that as well. But from a practical perspective, you know, the students coming to us are coming to us in a much more sophisticated manner than ever before. You know, Chromebooks now are available in touch models, and so I never want to put any kind of ceiling or box around what I think might be the case, but we do see that the middle three through five is probably a very practical approach to utilization of a Chromebook. The younger grades, K through two, seem to do better with a tablet-based or touch technology. So I would think that we're probably looking at at least a solid another year to bump down, but after that, I would want to work closely with the administrators and elementary teachers to see what's appropriate for those students coming in. Now, what I thought you were going to say, and we're anticipating this instructionally, is we're, and I see Jim Farnin sitting out there, we're grooming a whole new sixth grader at the fifth grade level. And so we're working with the middle school tech advisory committee, the middle school teachers, and the administration there to understand how the students that they're now going to be receiving next year are going to have much different needs than they did in the past. And they're already taking a look at their curriculum and adjusting it for next year based on the fact that some of the things that they would have introduced in sixth grade have already been dealt with in fifth. So those are the kinds of things that we're kind of anticipating as a, as a good problem to have, that our, you know, our students' capacity is improving and that we can better address it moving forward.
Yes, Christine.
My one question is, I like the whole computer technology board at the middle school. It involves students and putting the RFP. Is that something that you would consider rolling out to the high school level and maybe breaking it up by like ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth, to look at those needs? Because I think there would be some interesting aspects that we don't probably currently have.
We certainly can take that model. You know, I work closely with Scott and the subject area supervisors to try to best address the individual needs of the departments. I think what I've mentioned in the past is even surprising to me sometimes when you, you can't make any assumptions about one single subject area, because even within that subject area, there are different genres, and then within that different genre, you have teachers with different preferences. So sometimes we, not, one size does not fit all, so I will tell you that from a design perspective, we try to design something that has a lot of flexibility. And then we do a lot of proof of concepts. One quick example is this year, we put some Surface Tablets in science. You know, Chromebooks are great, but they're not the panacea, they don't do, they're not, they can't meet all needs. Sometimes there's very specific applications and/or interfacing that has to occur that requires a different type of device. And we found that as more and more apps become available for Chromebooks, that the one of the two carts that we put in science really, next year, could end up being a Chromebook cart, and we can repurpose that. I'm not sure I quite answered your question, but, because I'm thinking about how?
No, I'm just saying, even if you supplement it, even, the need is to work with the administrators and the teachers, and they all have different ideas on how they want their classroom to function. You could supplement it with having an advisory board maybe for the particular subject area, because I find that with technology, a lot of the students know a little more than we do on certain, certain areas?
Yeah, absolutely.
That we might not consider otherwise.
That's a great takeaway, and, you know, one thought that reinforces, that is the small student focus group that we had on Aspen, and, you know, we don't probably go to engage students enough, and they are the, you know, they are our users of technology, so.
And innovators.
Yes, I will take that away with, with that.
I just have a quick question. Do we have a way that we are identifying, identifying kids who are being introduced to technology? Do we have a way that we are identifying kids who are being introduced to technology, obviously at younger ages, but when they go home, they don't have access to a computer? Do we have loner programs? Are we, are we, believe it or not, there are students out there that they don't have a home environment where they have a computer or even wireless, and we're moving quickly, and I even see it with, you know, my youngest kid, where, you know, the assumption is, oh, everybody has a computer, so you can go home and practice your state capitol on this website or that website. Not everybody does, and I just wonder if we're kind of-
Yep, I can speak to that on a couple different levels. First of all, not only do we have some scenarios where the technology, the connectivity, the device is not available at home, but we have parents who choose not to provide it-
Right.
Or, not provide, choose not to have their students access it at home. So we need to be mindful, and teachers need to be mindful when they're, you know, doing assignments-
Well, sometimes it's not a choice, it's, you know, they can't afford it.
Right. But now, in regard to more specific answering your question, we have always maintained a small loner collection of computers.
Okay.
I can't say that it's a formal program. It generally comes to us in the way of a referral from a guidance counselor or a principal saying that this student has asked if there's a possibility, and we will do everything in our power that is appropriate and reasonable to make sure that our students are successful, both here and at home. So we also are entertaining. We haven't had a chance as administrative team, I've had a chance to see it, and we've just gotten done with a pretty large survey, so we don't want to survey everyone. But there is also a survey that's available, it's very specific, related to technology and technology utilization. And one of the questions, or several of the questions, get to the kind of the heart of what you're asking, and that is, it asks parents and students to kind of provide some insight as to what their accessibility is at home. And so we'll be having that discussion in the coming weeks about how, maybe not as much of when we, or how, if we would do it, but when we'd be, when would we do it? And when would be appropriate to kind of survey our students and parents in that regard? And that survey is anonymous in that it would not identify anybody and embarrass anybody from participating, but give us the information to make some better intelligent decisions moving forward.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else?
Just a very quick question.
Yes.
What do we, I imagine, since we've purchased equipment over time, some has gotten outdated or whatever, what do we do with electronics that are outdated?
So, that's an easy one. We actually have some nice board policies around that, and we have some guidelines in regard. So what we first do is we use the same public auction site as O&amp;M does. We take all of our equipment, and I'll assure you that we evaluate it and try to get the best utilization and bang for our buck before we put it on auction. But it goes to public auction, and we've been doing this for roughly a couple of years now. It receives a modest amount of money, which gets filtered back into the general fund. One of my staff persons will list it and manage the logistics around awarding bids, well, the bids are awarded electronically, but facilitating the delivery and transactions. And of the equipment that is not auctioned or not, there's no bids on it, we do one of two things. We will go to approve electronics recycling program. And in the past, we've actually approached other districts. We have, you have a board policy that permits us that if there's another district that's in need, and although we may have exhausted its usefulness, it may be a niche or something that's still of some value to them, then based on the CFO's approval, we can provide that equipment to them. And I can think of one example. Our, if you recall, when I first got here, we put wireless access points in the high school. But as we grew out of that technology and just replaced them, we shared those with another less fortunate public district in the area who's going through some fiscal difficulties. It worked out really well because they already had similar technology, and so they were able to augment their program with what we provided them.
And if there's secure information on-
Oh, yeah. We, so, just like any public agency, we do not ship any of our equipment with hard drives. Those hard drives are formatted with, you know, NSA-type formatting, seven-layer re-stripe or whatever they call it, they're destroyed. And I should add, and although that's not my department, the same due diligence is done with our copiers. If you remember, a few years ago, a few state agencies got caught, copiers now have hard drives that store images, and when we dispose of copiers, we make sure that we take the same precautions with the hard drives that are in those as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any more questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Sal.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. It is a little after nine, so we'll take a break. Unless any, the next section is for anyone in the audience to address the board on an agenda item, if there's any other pig students that want to do that before you leave, or no? All right, we'll take a five-minute break. And come up and sign out, please, so you can get credit. And if you have a form that needs to be signed, we're here to do that.
Yeah, this one-
All right, we'll continue the meeting again. At this point, we, the board would recognize anyone from the audience who would like to address us on any agenda item. If you could come up and state your name.
My name is Peter Fisk. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Bethlehem Swim and Diving Boosters. I remember for those, last week, we had some issues regarding the diving blocks in the pool as far as the new phase project goes. And I am happy to report and like to publicly thank both Mr. Nolte, oh, it looks like Mr. Keyes has already left, but they were gracious enough to agree to meet with me last Monday, at which point we discussed the differences. And again, happy to report that we have essentially ironed out any concerns, and we are happy to say that we're on board with this project and look forward to it going forward. And on that note, I'm going to introduce a couple of members of the swim team, Connor Doyle and my son Ryan Fisk.
Thank you.
Evening, Board. My name's Connor Doyle, and I'm a junior here at Bethlehem, a member of the varsity swim team. Tomorrow, a couple of my teammates and I will be traveling to Buffalo to compete at the New York State Championship Meet, where we'll be racing some incredible athletes and at a pool that uses the highest level of technology. After states this year, it'll signal the final year of my high school swimming career. And because of this, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the board for everything that has done for the pool over the past couple of years. I'd like to say that we're very grateful for all the funds allocated for the past few years and the years to come, and the board's support of Bethlehem Swimming is one of the greatest reasons I'm proud to be an Eagle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck on your race.
Yeah. Good. Thank you. Anyone else? Thanks.
I think you should give them an Eagle pin.
Yeah, all right. That's, gentlemen, come on up. You've been awarded an Eagle pin each of you.
If you're proud to be an Eagle, you get a pin. It's good luck for the meet.
Yes, thanks. What event are you doing?
I'm doing individual swimming, also working on the rest.
Oh, great. Good luck.
Wear proudly.
Yes, thank you.
Bring your teammates next time, we'll give them the-
Yeah. Next, this finance item, number eight. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items A through C.
Sub move.
Second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, can I ask you, because I don't, you have my attention. Is this where the warrants are?
The claims auditor and the treasurer's report, yes.
So I just have a question about the payment or the relationship of the town of Bethlehem and the, for the SROs and security. Could you just explain who pays for them and et cetera, because I saw the disbursement for the-
We pay the town a portion of the cost of the school resource officers. We also pay them whenever we request special security details, either for dances or athletic events. We pay a fixed amount annually for the school resource officer program, and then the other services are all billed on an hourly basis. And the invoice that's on this particular warrant is just for a half a year of services. They tend to, they don't bill us monthly, it's every six months.
Great, thank you very much.
Anyone else, any questions?
Yeah, just one comment. I just wanted to say thank you to Alyssa Iser for the nice little visual of two new items in the cafeteria, the low-fat yogurt with the low-sugar Cheerios and bananas. I just asked a couple of the kids, like, what do you think about some of the new items? And they mentioned the yogurt. And also that, maybe I'm just hungry, but that broccoli dish looked really, with the chicken, looked really good. So I appreciate the effort she's putting in to bring some nice, healthy, really appetizing looking food to the cafeteria, so. And it was nice that we got to see it with the visual that she sent around.
And to improve the budget issues there.
Right, and-
I mean, you see the reports.
Yeah, the added bonus of it's obviously working in a fiscal way.
Anyone else? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions that item carries? Item number nine, professional personnel, is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items A through F.
Sub move.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions that item carries? Item number 10, support personnel, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items A and B.
Sub move.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstention that item carries? Other action items, is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items A through B.
Sub move.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstention that item carries? Next, we would recognize anyone in the audience who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item. No, opinion, any? Move on. Future meetings, our next meeting is Wednesday, March 16, with a 6:00 PM anticipated executive session, 7:00 PM public meeting. The next meeting after that is Tuesday, April 5th, again, 6:00 PM executive session with a 7:00 PM open board meeting. And then the next meeting after that is April 19th, 6:00 PM executive session, 7:00 PM public meeting. All of those are being held here at the high school.
Can I make a comment before you close the talk? I noticed in the spotlight today that the library is advertising that there are applications for board seats at the library, and perhaps, I don't know if we want to, whether we use the spotlight or local media to indicate that we also have applications for board seats.
Right. Of which, our election day is May-
Seventeenth.
May 17th. We'll have a budget, we'll potentially have the school bus proposition, and there will be two seats up for election, too. And those petitions are due by?
April 18.
When can they pick those petitions up? Are they ready? Pick them now?
Ready now. And do, require how many signatures issue?
Sixty-four, sixty-seven, something like that.
Sixty-four? Okay.
And I will not be running again, so.
Okay.
You like to save that time.
I do.
Well, I want to make sure we get people going.
But there are two seats available.
Right.
And also, I'd ask the board that, because we do have to vote at the next meeting on the bus proposition, that if anybody does have any specific questions that they would need to be addressed by the next meeting, to please email that to Jody. Yeah, yeah. And make sure you include everybody on that, all board members on that email, so we can address any concerns anyone might have, so that we can take the necessary vote at the next meeting. We do need to go back into executive session to discuss a contractual issue. We do not anticipate making any, taking any votes after that. So basically, this is the end of the public session. Can I have a motion to go into exec session? First and second, all in favor? Aye. Okay. We're adjourning to exec session. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.